All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the mixture of November and December zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the town of Carmel. Board members' names are in front of you on the dais. Mike Carnaza, code enforcement officer. Mr., I was going to say full shetty. Mr. Charbonneau is our town council and Darrell?
Ed.
Ed, sorry, is joining us for fun, all right? The way we operate is I'll ask you to come up to the podium. I'll swear you in. We'll hear your case. We'll let the board ask questions and make comments. We'll open it up to the public. Once we close a hearing, there's no input from the public at any point, so please keep that in mind. If anyone's going to come up outside of an applicant that's going to speak or be heard from the public side, make sure that you sign in with your name, phone number, and address. All right? Will you all please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Our first case is a holdover from a couple of months ago for Fernando Medina. Are you guys here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Finally made it.
Thank you.
All right, state your names and address for the record, please, and just all please speak clearly and distinctly into the microphone so we can pick you up. This is being recorded for minutes from our secretary, so if you could turn the mic to your, if you're both going to be speaking, turn the mic to your mouth, please.
It's on.
It's, yeah, it should be able to bend. All right, state your names and address for the record, please.
Sure. Fernando Medina, 44 Kelly Road, Carmel, New York.
Denise Medina, 44 Kelly Road, Carmel, New York.
Okay, just turn that down, the mic down to your mouth. Yeah, there you go. Perfect. All right, raise your right hands. You have to swear again. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Swear.
Okay, thank you. Bring us through your case. You have a fence that's been put up, that's right, oh, let me read. It's four-foot front is what's required for the height of the fence. What's provided is six feet, so you need a two-foot variance for the front. All right, tell us why, why you did this, why it's...
Sure, we have three young children. There are a two-year-old, a four-year-old, and a six-year-old. Our home is non-compliant. It's 14 feet from the road, no sidewalk, so it's really a safety issue for the kids. Cars, you know, just drive by, they slow down, they look. Kids are playing, it's really not a safe. It's too close, so that's why we brought it up, to keep our kids safe in the section that we did. We didn't do the whole section, we just did the, a section of it. That's a concern, where the kids play.
All right, how long has it been up for?
Since we bought the house, there was a gate that was six feet in there. We just continued the gate.
Yeah, so it's been up maybe three months now, but we missed another hearing, so I think it was probably there for three months now.
All right, well, it had to be picked up. Did someone complain about it, or did...
Uh, no.
Dennis probably did his rounds and saw that it was not...
Yeah, no, we got signatures. We don't have, across the street, there's no neighbors. Our two side neighbors, they're very far away, and they were okay with it. They didn't have any issues.
All right, so the big concern is safety for children, right? Has there been any issues?
Yeah, there's just cars that drive by and slow down, and then just slowly drive and peek in, and it just doesn't seem right.
Oh, was it, you had a T? There's another road that...
Yeah, but it's down more the road. There's Houston down the road, but there's like an uphill, so it's weird to explain, but as you go up, their, their cars are just literally just slow down to look into to what's happening there, and then they just continue driving onto Houston.
All right, that's a little scary.
Yeah, and it's, like I said, it's three young kids.
All right, what's, what's the value of this fence? What did you pay it?
No, we made it ourselves. We put it, my father's a carpenter, old school from Venezuela, so he helped us out. We spent maybe 500 bucks.
But you had to be a value from material and his labor, what would it cost if...
It was a hundred bucks per panel, and there's about six panels and some, maybe eight hundred bucks. We didn't pay him anything. He just did it, you know, for free for us.
If you had it professionally, probably a couple thousand.
Yeah, a couple thousand, yeah, two, three thousand.
Just establishing a record for what, what the value of...
Yeah, two, three thousand, yeah.
All right, hold board members. John, any, any questions on this?
You know, I was by the house. It's sort of on an incline going up. If you're coming from the main road...
Correct.
And it's a nice fence. I think it's cedar, and that it's made out of, right? And it's six feet high.
Yeah, it's a standard that came in from Home Depot. We didn't, you know, that's what they sell.
No one's more concerned about safety than, than us, and especially for your children. But if it was four feet or six feet, you know, it's...
You can still peek in, so...
It's still what?
You can still peek in from outside.
Oh, so it was for a visual?
Correct.
You don't want anybody looking in?
Like I mentioned, they stop and they look, and they, they're like, you know, slowly look, and then they keep going, and we can't tell most of the time who they are. Like, I have cameras now that can catch the plates, but it's just creepy.
People were looking in?
Yeah, correct, looking into the, like I said, my house is literally 15 feet from the road with no sidewalk.
Yeah, I was there. Yeah, I was, I was one of the people stopping and looking.
Oh, was you one of the creepy?
I was looking right through, I was looking at your front door, and I said, boy, I can still, you know, see your front door, and it is, and all, the house is closer to the road.
It's very close, yeah.
And, you know, I'm saying it's, it's a, it's a big thing to have, because anyone could have that then, you know, like with a house close to the road, have a six-foot fence. I don't think it poses any problems to you, you know, if no one's pulling out. If you were pulling out of your driveway, does that fence block you? You know, if you're looking, if someone's coming down the hill and you're pulling out of your driveway?
Well, my driveway is probably 60 feet from the door of the house, so it's very, it's a lot, you know, there's a lot more distance there, and then...
So, it's, if that was four feet, I'm saying, you don't want anybody seeing in, for viewability, that's really...
And if I think about it, if any, at four feet, you can still jump in and, you know, with the stuff you hear in the news, you can, four feet's not that high, given the distance. You can, you know, I still see it as a, because of the proximity of the house, I see it as a, as a safety issue. Now, if we were 40 feet, like a normal house would, or whatever, you know, whatever the rule is, then it would be different for the, that close of a distance. If they try to open the door, if a ball goes and they try to jump in, you know, it's just a lot of things that the six feet will do better than four.
All right, Rose, you want to?
Are you conducting business over there? There seems to be some commercial-type construction vehicles.
Yeah, I have, I have, when I don't conduct business, I have some of my tools and, that I have a shed in the back that I pick up, take and go.
Yeah, they look like some vehicles, though.
Yeah, yeah, I have a, I have a Sprinter, but that's personal use, and I have a truck, yeah. I park it there.
One business vehicle?
Yeah, the business is registered in Manhattan, but I parked the van there.
Okay.
All right, guys down here?
No questions.
All right, anybody in the public wish to be heard on this application? I'll look for motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, guys. I failed to mention, if you guys want to stick around as we adjudicate later for your decision, otherwise you can go and watch it on TV. We just forget the channels, or get a decision tomorrow and call Mike's office and get the decision, but I don't think it'll be too late tonight, so if you want to stick around, I know you guys have young children, so if you want to get home, you can watch out of TV. Yeah, Verizon Channel 24 and Comcast Channel 95. Thank you, Dawn, for hosting that. All right? What'd you say? 92?
YouTube.
Oh, YouTube, all right.
I'll get those.
Oh, that was Vin.
Yeah, Vin, he said...
I heard a voice in my head.
That's good.
All right, application number two is DeGasperi, 112 Bucks Hollow Road. Whole slew of variances needed here. So, constructing a garage. So, lot area is 40,000 square feet. There's only 20,000, 725, so variance of 19, 275 is needed. Lot width of 150 is required. 96 exists. 54 is being sought. Driveway width is 24 feet, as per code. 12 feet is provided. 12 feet is being sought for variance. Side yard house, 25 feet. 16 feet exists. Nine-foot variance. Side yard garage, 18, being provided. Two-foot variance. Rear yard garage, 20 feet is the code. 15 feet is existing or in place, and a five-foot variance is required. All right?
End-of-use variance also.
End-of-use variance, of course, all right.
Because it's a mixed use.
That's right. All right, Mr. Correll, state your name, address for the record, please.
My name is John Correll, 121 Cushman Road in Patterson, New York.
Raise the right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir. All right, bring us through your application. You're representing a client, correct?
Yes.
All right, what's, what's, what's the story?
Well, Mr. Gasperi is building a garage for his personal use and his little business. Most of the variances are because of the property size, if you know. You know, the lot area requires 40,000 square feet, and we're providing 20,000, but that's the way the lot was created, so that variance, yeah.
Jack, can I just speak up? We've got some kind of unit running over here.
Okay, sorry. I can talk louder.
If you can.
The second variance is width, lot width, 150 feet. Same story. It's an existing lot. We have 96 feet, and there's a 54-foot variance. The driveway width, normally for a business like this, you need a 24-foot wide driveway, but basically this prop, this property doesn't need a 25, 24-foot driveway. It's a, it's a residential driveway, and it's, there's no trucks going in and out of there. The owner drives trucks, pickup trucks, or prop, you know, vehicles, so that's why we're asking for that. It just squishes up against the house if it was 24 feet.
What's the use of this garage? This is for these said vehicles?
For what?
What, what's the use of the garage? What's the...
You want to come up and tell them what's the uses?
All right, let me, I swear again. State your name and address for the record.
My name's Chris DeGasperi. We sit at 112 Bucks Hollow Road.
All right, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so what's the use for the garage?
So, as I run my plumbing and heating company out of there, and, whereas I have multiple sheds on the property now, so I'm trying to get rid of all the sheds and consolidate and keep everything on my inventory and some of my vehicles within the structure, trying to do.
Okay.
Just try to clean up the property.
You'll have garage doors, I presume?
There'll be overhead doors on.
Vehicles will go in, and...
Yeah.
I didn't get a chance to get out to see this one. Is it residence on the other side?
Well, no, I mean, you, you, you're adjacent to a commercial industrial granite yard, and then you have the industrial, you know, with plumbing supply area. I'm sure you're very familiar with that, and then there's body shop and a mechanic, and we have another, we have another case, you know, right, right next door in, in that lot. So, you see that blue granite warehouse, that's the, that's the western side of your property.
Right.
And you're going, you know, there was, I didn't walk back there, because there was snow, there was snow on the ground and stuff, but it's, it's in a, I don't think anyone's going to be, I don't think anyone's here. Maybe there is somebody here opposed to it, but I don't think so.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
We, we generated some views from the, from the street past the house, and you really can't see the garage so well from, you know, from the, from the, from the road.
Yeah, it goes down the hill a little bit.
Yes.
So, it's basically a commercial-looking garage, pitch roof. What kind of materials proposed to the outside?
It's going to be metal.
Metal, like a Butler type of?
Yeah.
It's going to match your neighbor, sort of? Is it bluish?
No, no, I'm not going to do blue. Yeah, I'm going to do, it's going to be gray. Do a gray building.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's 60 by 40?
Yes.
All right.
No, no water's inside, right? Or it's...
Not inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just going to have a water outside just for a hose connection.
And it's an open construction?
Yes.
On the inside?
It's going to be A-frame, yeah.
Open span?
Yes.
Clear span?
Yeah.
No, no need for heat or anything, right? You're just going to have electric-type heaters or...
Well, I am going to put heat in it. I'm going to put, just because it's going to be also, you know, workshop for myself.
There's electricity to the building?
Yeah.
Existing.
Existing.
Because there was a shed there.
The house never had a garage. Has, we just have a carport, and so I'm using as also, you know, between business and personal use as well for a garage.
All right, one concern we have is, is a use variance, so you have to prove, you know, we'll read the criteria, right, and for the board members to keep this in mind. Well, any questions from the board members on this application at this point?
I do. Will you be living in that property?
Yes.
You will always be living in it as long as that, okay?
You live there currently?
Yes.
And this is a commercial, zone commercial lot?
It is.
Okay.
So, it's a residential, existing residence, a zone commercial lot?
Either one of the uses are allowed, but together they're not. That's what happened here.
Right, so it's, it's mixed use. So, for a use variance, it's, number one, is incapable of earning a reasonable return if used for any of the allowable uses, so dollar amounts must be shown. And I did not see anything in the package to this effect. So, you know, usually you got to show, like, what's the hardship, or what's, what's the cost?
Of the structure?
Well, not only that, but, all right, you're incapable of earning a reasonable return if the use, if used for any of the allowable uses, all right? So, we have like a mixed use here, too. So, the second thing is the property is affected by unique or at least highly uncommon circumstances. And number three is it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, which I don't think it will, knowing what's, what's around there. And number four is, is it self-created? Is it not self-created? So, you're creating this, right?
Yes.
So, for a use variance, all of these items must be proven, right? I don't see evidence of, of the financial aspect.
You have to show what your expenses are and what you're, what you might bring in by having this, and compare the two. You have to show if you're losing money if you don't use this garage for that reason.
Like if you're renting space somewhere else and paying for that, or doing, a bunch of things you could show.
Right, okay.
Right, so currently, do you rent another space for your...
I don't rent, no. I, everything's rented off of that property. Sorry, I run the whole business right off of that property.
So, you'd have to almost show the value of doing this, how it would enhance your, your business or what have you, right? You have to show the dollars and cents of why you're, you're proposing to do this.
Well, the only thing that would benefit me is, is being more efficient, you know, running the company, as far as, right now, we're, like I said, we're running out of, out of structures, out of sheds, so I have inventory in multiple areas, so usually running around a property, you know, in the course of the day, in the mornings.
But you also show, there's a cost to build this building also, but is that, how's that going to benefit you down the road, right? You got to kind of show this to us
Right.
so we can decide if it fits this criteria.
Right.
And since you're growing out of your current sheds, if you needed to rent somewhere else, how much will that cost to rent space to put your equipment?
Wares, right, what you need to.
Right.
So, I think we probably would have to hold this over and have you come back until you can provide some of that data for us, which that's...
Yeah, if you call Rose or myself, we'll help you out with the, what's, how to do it.
All right.
All right, so I'll look for motion. Second, Mike?
I'll just guide you. I can't tell you how to do it, but I'll give you a guidance.
In this case, Mike, there's, there's no way it can just be an area variance if it was presented.
If it was one or the other, that's all it would be, but because it's a mixed use, and mixed use is not allowed there, that's their issue. And it's hard to show a financial hardship on a lot with a house. What did you buy? You bought a house. You didn't buy a business, so it's, it makes it difficult.
Yeah, it's kind of a tough one, but, um...
Do you, do you want to ask if anybody wants to speak on this?
Well, I mean, I can, but I, I don't think anyone is here to speak on it. I will. Anybody in the public wish to be heard on this application?
Good.
There you go, Jack. So, anyway, I'll look for a motion to hold this over. Just try to get that information test for next month, or before next month, prior to, so we can analyze it and, you know, go from there with it.
All right.
Is somebody taking minutes that we can...
It's being recorded so that she can make minutes from...
Okay, then we know what, what we're trying to...
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Well, like, like Mike said, you can reach out to him tomorrow.
All right, I will.
And just discuss it, right?
Okay.
All right, so I'll look for a motion to hold this application over.
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay.
Thank you.
Good night. Sorry. I got my system here. All right, next new application is number three for Richard Ginsburg for GGILS Texas LLC. Variance of section 156-9, seeking there variance for permission to add a second floor over existing house. Property is located at 14 Sycamore Road in Maupac, and its tax map 76.5-1-44. All right, the code requires or allows 15 feet to the side. What's provided is 9.3, and a variance of 5.7 is being sought. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just turn the mic down to your mouth so we can pick it up. There you go. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Richard Ginsburg, 14 Sycamore Road in Maupac, 10541.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, what are you doing? You're putting an addition on existing footprint?
So, correct. The house was built already in the setback. It's 115 years old. We recently bought it two months ago. We, we moved up here from Texas. We have children that live here, only because people always ask, why did I move here from Texas?
TMI, but glad, welcome to Maupac.
Anyway, thank you. So, the house is on the footprint that it is. The second story is already existing. There is a deck outside my bedroom that is 10 feet wide by, or 11 feet wide by 30 feet long. We just want to enclose that, excuse me, and make a master suite out of the...
It's a flat roof, right?
It is not a flat roof. We're going to...
No, existing, what's there is existing.
So, there's no roof there?
No, but it is a roof, right, from the room below.
Oh, correct.
I'm just making a joke, because it's one of man's worst inventions, is a flat roof.
Oh, correct, yes.
Nose leaking and what have you, but...
Correct, right.
I see what you're doing. You're going to, you're going to re-rafter from the crown from the ridge?
Correct, right, yeah. It's pretty easy.
Out to the new wall height and close it.
Right. So, we're not adding anything to the existing structure. The existing structure was built before probably there were setbacks, to tell you the truth.
Same, same footprint.
Right, and so, because we're going over into the 15-foot setback, I guess you guys, we, we just need to catch everything up from a permit perspective on the house.
All right, who did the rendering?
Uh, Tom Nugent.
Tom Nugent, okay.
Ted Nugent.
That's his brother.
Yeah.
All right, so you talked to your neighbors about this?
Yes, so I have a letter here from the HOA board that it's already been approved by them.
Okay.
My, my adjoining...
Can you submit that to us, please?
Sure, I can.
If you have an extra copy, that's fine. We'll keep it for the record.
And I have one from my adjoining neighbor. My other adjoining neighbor is not here. I have no objections from anybody in the neighborhood. It will add value. It doesn't block anybody's view. I'm a builder from Texas, and I will use a license contractor here in New York to do the work. I need to get some plans done. I haven't spent the money on the plans until I get approved for the, for the variance. Once I get approved, Nugent will do the plans.
Okay.
Mike and the group...
There's no property you can purchase to bring it into conformance, right? Obviously your landlocked there.
That is correct. It's the only structure on the, the property. There's nothing else to do with it, other than...
Okay.
What I can do.
All right, board members. Will, anything?
No questions.
Joel?
No.
Rose, John?
Looks good.
All right, any input from the public on this application? I'll look for a motion to close the hearing then.
Motion to close, nothing needed.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Have a Merry Christmas.
Likewise, same to you.
Merry Christmas.
All right, application number four for Liberty Bell Trucking, Greenpoint Tree Services, Contract Vendi, for a variation of section 156-9, seeking variance for permission to construct a commercial building. The property is located at 61-65 Old Route 6, Carmel, New York, and its tax map 55.11-1-19 and 20. Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Lynch, Putnam Engineering.
State your, yeah.
For Old Route 6, Brewster, New York.
Give me an address. There you go. Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
Right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
All right, you want to bring us through it?
This is lots number five and six of the Merriweather subdivision, which was subdivided back, I believe, in the late 70s, and you have very small lots, and that's why I'm showing you this first drawing. This is the actual subdivision that was presented and approved, so our two lots are actually... So our two lots are actually, these two here. And the Greenpoint Tree Services is looking to purchase the two lots, combine them, and have a single use on the property. When you do that and combine the two lots, you end up with, I think it's 87,000 square feet plus or minus of area, and we need by code 120,000. So it's a pre-existing two lots being put together, and we need a variance for the 32,812. And recently, back in April, the town adopted a new zoning code and the ordinance changed, and our front yard setback, where we had been, obviously, we've been in front of the planning board, we were conforming, but now with the new setback being increased to 50 feet, we are seven feet over that line. And I don't have the availability or ability to really ship the building back, because when you look at the site plan.
Yeah, it's steep.
This is the rock cut.
Yeah.
So I can't push the building back seven feet. We are already gonna be cutting out some of this rock.
Give me a layout of the architecture, what is, what's going on in the building?
Oh, the building is gonna be individually, like self-storage for contractors. So you can rent out a unit, keep all your equipment, materials, products, whatever.
Sort of like one of the previous applicants this evening. One of the applicants this evening was, had a plumbing business that.
Similar, so here you would have not, in this case, there's nine units, there'd be nine tenants.
Yeah.
And nothing will be stored outside, everything is to be enclosed inside the building.
So it's gonna be like roll-up garage doors, like larger doors of sorts?
Actually, it's like, I think like a 12 by 12, but there's more glass, there's glass doors involved and there's woodwork in front. It has like a Norwegian look to the building.
Okay.
Do you have a rendering of the building?
Excuse me?
Do you have a rendering of the building?
I did not bring one tonight, but there is one that we presented to the planning board.
I don't think, I don't remember seeing anything, Mike, it's like.
There's nothing in the packet here, but it's, you said Norwegian style.
Well, you would have, in essence, you, because it's a long, you're looking at 300 feet of frontage. So what these things are right here are planters, wetland planters. So they're basically like four feet off the ground, so the roof runoff comes down into these planters. You've got trees, shrubs, wetland-related vegetation that'll be growing in here. You'd have a garage door opening there and then an actual door opening into the unit. From the garage door to that door, it would be, there'd be like a wood facade placed on the metal building, just to change in contrast, different material. So it has a nice look to it.
So both lots will be merged into one common lot, and then is there any way we could bring those, the front facade back? I mean, you're gonna lose some square footage, but to make it comply a little more?
Well, that was my headache, it was like I'm running into that rock face in the.
No, but like the front elevation of the building itself.
Oh, shrink the building.
Alright, so you can comply with that setback.
It would just, it would just be this one, this is the only corner.
Oh, is that right?
It's not the entire building, it's just, it's just this corner.
Last unit.
Alright.
What's the, what's the length of that? They're all the same.
Sorry I wasn't clear on that, but.
This is the setback line, right through here.
Yep.
So if you're guessing, I'm guessing 70 by 210, half of 210 is 107 and a half feet.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the square footage, out of the 20,000 square feet of building.
So, yeah, I gotcha, that makes sense. It's minimal.
Yeah, it's just that little corner.
The building, yeah. Alright, so it's not like the whole building is forward to the property.
No, it was just, it was just that corner.
Plus, that's all, pretty much all commercial road back there anyway, right?
Yes, on the opposite side of the street is the, was it the CND?
Yes, Tompkins Recycling.
Recycling, the old Times Recycling Facility.
The dog, the species.
Dogs are all here, and then you have. Charlie Evans' site is right there.
Okay.
And he was before this board several, you know, about a year ago, I think.
And the planning board's been asking for that farm look along there too, so they're trying to dress up that area a little bit.
Yeah, that's good. So it's less commercialized, but a little mix of residential kind of tinge to it. Alright, John, any questions, comments?
No, I have no questions.
No questions.
Rose? Down here, you guys are good? Willie, you're the Carmel guy, come on, you got something.
So is there anything behind the building, or is it just going to back up to the woods?
You know, you have to leave a driveway of some sort for emergency grass, right?
There's about 15-foot space that we're able to provide to get around the building. And at the top of the hill is the bikeway. So the bikeway runs along the entire back of this property.
That's right.
And then you just have woods going up to what would be, you know, Everett Road or whatever that is, you know, several hundred feet away.
So this is gonna replace what is currently like a quarry, has been operating as, it looks like a quarry?
Basically, you saw the pictures, right?
Yes.
This is two of the lots that are the quarry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, anybody from the public have any questions or comments on this application? Ma'am? You have to come up, I gotta swear you in, and you gotta state your name and address. Speak into the microphone, please. And when you leave, just write your name and address and contact info.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Stacy Lopez, 42 Bena, Poughkeepsie, New York, I work at Putnam Humane Society.
Alright, raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
So my question, this is a storage unit that you're putting up?
Yes, they're storage units, so in other words, a contractor would bring in his, a trailer, if he had a backhoe on it, he could store that inside the garage unit. If he had a cement mixer, he'll bring that inside and store it.
Everything's gonna be inside, he stated nothing outside, right?
Right, so these are all big, powerful equipment going in there, a lot of noise.
Not necessarily, no, you could have like a plumber can store his material in there, you can have a carpenter make a little shop with his wood and whatnot, or, you know, pretty much for tradespeople, a landscaper to put his equipment in, no one's gonna be actually operating there.
No power tools.
It's just storage for that type of.
Yeah, no noise.
So just trucks going in?
It's storage, it's not a work area.
But storage for?
Could be trucks and materials.
Anything, anything dealing with the trades or landscaping, anything, you know, a contractor would use.
Okay, so just wanted to address you guys, thank you for hearing me. I'm not supposed to be here, Michelle Dugan is supposed to be here, but she had an emergency surgery with her husband, so unfortunately, I'm here, and I'm the worst speaker ever, so can I just read you guys something?
Absolutely.
Okay. And this was just all off the cuff this morning. So I'm here behalf of the animal shelter and the staff and all of us that care for the dogs. As you know, constructions being on the property directly behind us. While we understand the importance and the progress of development in Putnam, we've been there for 20 years, we get it, we know things change. I have to bring your attention to the serious and immediate impact on the noise level that's having on our dogs and our cats. Over the past several weeks, months, we have seen a clear troubling change in our animals' behavior. The constant loud noise, heavy machinery, drilling, trucks, movement in and out of the roads have created an environment for our dogs that they're fearful and stressed inside of their home. This is where they live. The dogs who once were confidence dogs that would love to go out are now scared dogs that do not want to leave their kennels. They pace back and forth, they're very anxious, many hesitate to step out of the runs. One particular dog, Val, that has lived there numerous amount of years, used to enjoy her daily walks, her enrichment. Now, she will not go to the gate, she refuses to go any further. She spends her day curled up inside of her igloo in her house frightened to go for a walk. And she's not alone on this, it's becoming a pattern to our dogs at the shelter. It's important to recognize the noise effect of our animals, and it's different from humans to people, of course. Dogs and cats hear in higher intensity and across a broader range of frequency. So if that seems to be tolerant for us, it's overwhelming for our dogs and painful for them, they're living a life of painful. This prolonged progress exposes the taking a toll on their immediate physically and mental health. Many of these animals already come to us with trauma and instability in their lives. We don't have much to offer them except for their daily walks and enrichment and human interaction. We are deeply concerned, not only about the current situation, but also about the future that holds the construction that's going around with heavy trucks and trafficking increasing. Without support or adjustment to this construction plan and what's gonna be further in the future, we speak upon their health, their safety, and my staff's safety at risk. Thank you for your time, your attention and support. I mean, we're Carmel, we've been there for years. I just appreciate you guys listening to me.
Okay, just write your name and address and contact info, please. We understand your concern here. Suffice to say that construction shouldn't be more than seven, eight months, Paul, right? To build the place, probably less.
I would say this would be probably less.
Yeah, because you're not digging a lot, you're all flat land relatively, you're not gonna be hammering any rock, basically butler-type buildings, right?
Yes.
Maybe the loudest noise would be swinging of a hammer or not even, they're probably gonna be using screw guns for.
Yeah, this construction that's gonna take place on this lot, these two lots, is a lot different from what's going on next door to you where they're driving piles, because that was wetland. So they're looking to put in footings and foundations to hold their building up so it doesn't sink. And that's, and they've been doing that now for quite a while. And they've had the massive retaining walls that they had to build, and that was just part and parcel of the development of that Tompkins site. But they'll be nowhere near that kind of noise generated from the building on this site.
And suffice to say, it would be temporary, like I said, maybe six months, right? Worst case.
Yeah.
Beyond that, you're not gonna have any operating noise. You might have a truck backing up with a beep 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 alarm or whatever, but that's the extreme I think you're gonna hear.
Yeah, and even when I got this, I mean, I seen the tree service. So I was like, Wayne, what are they doing, are they, so I was a little, wasn't sure about, are they making the tree service?
No.
Bringing it over there?
No, they have a construction, their yard is actually on Stony Avenue, and that's gonna remain there. There's not gonna be a yard here, in essence, where you're gonna have outdoor storage, trees being brought in and cut or anything like that that takes place up the street from you, there's none of that.
That was brought over too, to us, I was like, we can't have.
Yeah, it's a temporary inconvenience.
Think of the.
It'll be temporary, very temporary.
Think of the self-storage that's up the street from you on the south side. It's similar to that, except instead of it being people bringing their belongings and putting it in storage, it's gonna be a contractor coming in to pick up a piece of equipment, something that he needs on a particular job that day. Otherwise, he's leaving it in that unit, because he doesn't have anyone else to put it. So it's just.
Right, picture a carpenter buying a boatload of wood, right, to maximize scale of cost. He could store it here and pull it as he needs it, right? Or, you know, something to that effect, you're not gonna have a lot of loud operating.
But I get you, even the more the traffic, you know, I get that all gonna be for sale. I don't even know how much he has left or how he's gonna go further, but just please, when you guys approve stuff, think of us, think of, you know, the animals. We missed, you know, the board missed it on what's going on across the street, they blew it, you know, so now we have to live with that. You know, I don't know how we're gonna do that, I don't know how we're gonna do that, what's going on there, but if somebody else comes up before you guys for the next lots that's going on, please just consider us and the animals.
We will, of course.
Please, I really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, anybody else in the public who should be heard?
Will the quarry activities kind of slow down? Because, you know, you're now building on the lot instead of, you know, constantly digging up wood, stone and stuff like that?
Yeah, the quarrying operation is pretty much centered down on lot one right now. And actually, I'm in, I've made a submission to the planning board for lots two and three, which I'm gonna be bringing ultimately here for, because we're gonna combine those two lots.
You wanna give us a heads up?
I'm giving you advance notice. But again, that development will be pretty much at great, so you're just looking at foundations being excavated.
And just pinning to existing rock.
Yeah, it's actually, it's not even existing rock, because the rock's been taken out, so now you've got, you know, a sandy gravelly soil, so you're just excavating footing, foundation, and you're putting your metal building up and you're done.
And drilling though, I mean, all the drilling.
No, 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 no. No, all that, all that part of the, when Schultz was excavating all this out and drilling and blasting, all that works over with. Down here, he's pretty much finished, he's just taking out the end of it, which is down by the Putnam County, I think that's the records building down there.
So she should see some relief soon, then, if the major excavation and.
It's coming to an end.
There's no relief, I don't know if we're ever, or never, we're never gonna get a relief, the dogs are never gonna get a relief.
That location is not a great location to have.
But it was, we've been there for almost 40 years, it was, it was a good location, it was a quiet location. Should we bought all of it? Yeah, we probably should have bought all of it when it went up for sale, when he started mining it, we couldn't afford that. We bought what we could, you know, that's all we could, we would have loved to bought all of it, of course, but we bought what we could. You know, we couldn't buy it all, you know, and the dogs have had to gone through the blasting. You know, remember years ago, they were blasting, where they would call us on the phone and say, hey, get ready, it's gonna be blasting. We would have to run all those dogs in, you know, so it's tough, they've been here before anybody else, you know, they've been here, you know, it's their home, it's theirs, you know, there's not much for them, this is theirs, you know, so just trying to protect.
I understand.
And we can't afford to go anyplace else, you know, we've tried to look for other places, but we can't afford to go and move, everybody's like moving, like we can't move, we can't move. So I'm just asking you guys, guys, to protect them, and I appreciate it a lot.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that's it from the board, anybody in the public, we're good? Alright, look for a motion to close the hearing?
Motion closed.
One second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Paul, you're on the next application too as well, right? Yes. Alright, application number five, Russell Bonnier for variation of section 156-9, seeking a variance for permission to subdivide our 1898 acre parcel into two individual lots. Property is located at 103 Pigot Road, Carmel, New York, and its tax map 76.12-1-5. So lot area for one, code requires lot area for lot one is 120,000 square feet. What's provided is 41,207, so variance of 78, 792. Lot one width is 200 feet is required, existing or proposed is 147.6, so variance of 52.4. Lot one frontage is 40-foot setback, would be proposed as 39.8 feet, so variance of .2 feet is being sought. Lot two area width is 120 square feet again, what would exist is 41, 469, and a variance of 78, again, 530. And lot two width is, again, required, 200, what would be provided is 147.8 and a variance of 52.2 feet. Okay, you're already sworn in, you're gonna be speaking, sir?
Yes.
Alright, state your name and address for record.
Mark Bonnier, 8 Crane Road, Carmel, New York.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Alright, Paul, you wanna bring us through this, the history here and?
Yes, this is actually a residual lot from a subdivision that was created back in 1955. There were actually two plats that were filed back, one in, I think, in 55 and the other in 56. The plat that was filed. The plat that was filed in 55 dealt with properties on the north end, which was from this property back down to Quoten Falls Road. And the 56 subdivision dealt with properties from the south side, from what was created as this line going in, in the southerly direction. So McLaughlin Acres is pretty much a subdivision that has lots averaging about six to seven tenths of an acre in size. And this is one of these things where the Bonyers actually purchased this lot on the northern side back in 55 or 56.
The first one, yeah.
Yep, the first lot. So they bought this property, built the house. Mary Mc, Mary McLaughlin subdivided that off, sold this residual lot to a family who then in turn, a couple of years later, 1962, sold it to the McLaughlins and they built this house.
Sold it to the Bonyers.
Oh, it's the Bonyers, I'm sorry. So they sold it to the Bonyers and the Bonyers then built the house and moved into, into that house on this 1.898 acre lot.
So the one house still exists on that Lot 1?
Yes.
And Lot 2 you propose...
Yeah, so the, the one variance is because the existing house is 38.8 feet and the requirement is 40. That's where that two tenths of a foot comes from.
Yeah, it's like three inches.
All right, so that, that house is still in the family? Still owned by you or your parents or...
Oh, no, my parents are both passed. But it's owned by the children. There's five of us.
Okay.
And actually, your dad just passed away.
Just passed a few months ago, yeah.
So this, this process, it started over a year ago. So he was active in this because this is something he's been trying to do since he bought the property back in, back in the 60s.
So like five years ago, my father had a stroke. And his desire was to live out his remaining years in that house. And he was limited assets, so we thought, let's, let's sell this piece, get some funds and help him if he needs to stay in that house for nursing care at the house. So that's what started it. And a friend of mine told me, says, since the town is, seems to be more, seems to be more receptive to this type, these types of things and also that they, they also allow now accessory apartments. He said, you should try it. Because my father, I guess, back in 2000...
Which is this drawing here. He started the process back in 2000, the subdivide.
Yeah, we have the minutes.
Yeah, and I think at that time, that's when the moratorium came in and then ultimately zoning got changed to blank, three acres and...
Yeah, so he was discouraged and then he just got used to the vacant piece next to him. He said it offered some privacy for him. And he had a garden there and blueberry bushes and stuff like that, so.
All right, so the lot sizes are actually bigger than what's existing in and around, correct?
Correct.
This is the current lot here in green. And these are the surrounding lots that were the subdivision lots based on the McLaughlin subdivision. So basically, you're looking at .7, .6, .6, .58. That's an acre, .87. So in terms of the subdivision itself, it really fits in with the character of the neighborhood. Because it's all, it was basically a residual piece of property that was not, believe it or not, was, the way they did things back then was not part of either subdivision.
Right.
Which is, in today's world, we don't do it that way, but back then they did. So this gives you a better picture.
Yeah.
Also, the original deed, when my father, when my parents purchased that property, and I have copies here, said that that property, piece of property was for two single-family homes. I have copies of it if you, if you want to see it.
They have it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the, you know, the concept back then was...
Yeah, we know that.
They had it already, Mark, yeah. So the concept back then was that when Mary sold it originally, the larger lot, she was assuming it was going to get re-subdivided. You know, and this is, now we're talking 70 years ago.
Right.
And she had put it in the deed that, yeah, you could have two houses on that lot, even though it still would have to go through planning board process back then. But, you know, the, the frame, framework, the groundwork was already laid down for, for Russell, his dad, that, yeah, you, you can re-subdivide this lot. We're not constraining you to, you got to, you're buying it and this is what it's going to be. So in, in general, then, when you go back and look at it, it fits the fabric of what's going on around it. Very similar to the, the presentation I made for CAS months ago.
All right, so Paul, let me just, I'll go through the area of variance, right? So everyone understands, will, or criteria. Will an undesirable change in character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties be created by granting them the variance? No, again, there's two larger lots out of the whole neighborhood. Can any other method be used that does not require variance but still allow for the benefit requested? The existing house, right, is, is not, you know, needs a variance, right, because of the front setback, so I don't think that's an issue. Is proposed variance substantial? Again, no, it's not any larger than what's around in the neighborhood. Will proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? Again, I think it's well within similarity to the other lots, right?
Yes, it does not. I don't, yeah.
And is the alleged difficulty self-created? I don't think so. The lot was a larger lot when it was bought originally.
Right. It was larger before the three acres owning, right?
And they've owned it for, you know, 63 years.
Yeah. So just so you guys take that into consideration when we adjudicate. All right, do you guys have any questions? Do you have to put another well out there for water?
We would, yeah.
Actually, as part of the planning board process, which was one of the reasons that it's taken a while for us to get here, they wanted us to prove out with the Health Department that we could put in a septic system well that meets current code requirements. We've done that testing, it's, it's complete and we have satisfactory results. So this lot can support a three-bedroom home.
Yeah, no, it's a nice piece of property, been out there.
Yeah, he's, my father's been offered several times from people driving by to sell to him, sell it, but he always refused, so.
All right, Rose, got anything?
No questions.
Yeah, it's good down here?
No questions.
All right, anybody in the public wish to be heard on this application? All right.
Thank you.
Look for a motion to close the hearing.
Some of...
Second, all in favor?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. All right, our last case tonight is John Lemmons for variation of section 156-9, seeking a variance to add five self-storage buildings. Code change created non-conformity. The property is located at 100 Bucks Hollow Road in Mahopac. It's tax map 75.2-20-75, 76, 77, and 78. So the code requires or allows lot coverage of 45%. What's provided is 71% is what's proposed and a variance of 26% would be sought. The old code required building coverage and it was only structures that counted. Now it includes sidewalks, driveways, parking areas, everything. So we're going to have, we're going to have this all over the place. This is going to be coming.
Wow.
It's lot coverage, not building coverage anymore.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name and address.
Adam Thieberg, Insight Engineering, 3 Garrett Place, Carmel.
All right, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Is anyone else going to be speaking with you tonight or...
I'm joined by the applicant, Jack Lemmons. He, he may or may not speak depending on...
All right, that's fine. No, unless you come up, we'll swear you in if and when. Okay, bring us through what's, what's going on here.
Sure. So we're here tonight, as, as Mike was mentioning, to just clean up the file on a pre-existing non-conforming condition at 100 Bucks Hollow Road in the Corridor Business Zone, where the applicant owns and operates an industrial park which houses various trades and industrial uses. The applicant, as, again, as was mentioned, has a project before the planning board seeking the approval to construct five self-storage buildings on the property.
And this is not like the previous applicant this evening about, this is...
This would be self-storage.
It's more residential self-storage.
Yes, open to the public, yep. So as part of the site plan approval process for that project, it was noted that, as, as Mike had mentioned, there's a new code requirement for the site that was adopted just earlier this year as part of the new zoning code. So as, as was mentioned, lot coverage is, basically permits a certain percentage of a given property to be, to be developed with, with buildings and pavement. In the Corridor Business Zone, the maximum permitted lot coverage is 45%. The site currently contains 76%. And the project that's before the planning board proposes to reduce that to 71%. So I'll go through the five criteria, but before I do that, just to emphasize a few points. One, the lot coverage on-site is existing. It long predates this new requirement. And the site has existed in its current configuration for many years. Two, the proposed project does not create any new lot coverage. So the entirety of the project lies within an area that's already counted as lot coverage. Three, the proposed project will provide a reduction in the lot coverage that exists, that exists now.
Adam, if I may, what would be being removed to bring those numbers down?
So right now, the lot coverage includes, you know, basically all the parking in here, obviously the buildings. This area through here, which kind of comes back to a barricade on the end here, this is all paved with asphalt millings. There is a little path that comes down here that is the same. And then down here as well, you've got asphalt millings that would count as lot coverage. That area, the millings are going to be removed in favor of a stormwater management practice associated with the, with the proposed project. So it's another benefit, I was going to mention it later, but the, the other benefit of this is that part of the project is going to include a stormwater management practice where there isn't one now. So in other words, we'll be collecting runoff and it'll be treated with these practices that don't, that don't exist currently, in addition to the reduction in overall lot coverage and impervious surface.
Will the dry hydrant still be there?
I, yes.
You said fire hydrant, Mike? It's a dry hydrant. They can pump water out to help anywhere in the area if they need it.
Out of the pond right there.
There's a pond at the bottom and there's a, it's a four-inch line that goes down, I believe. And they tie the truck right to it and just draw the water out if needed.
Okay. It's good to have.
So just to hit one, one other item. The proposed project is also otherwise wholly zoning compliant. So the need for this variance wasn't precipitated by, was precipitated by the adoption of the new code, not by anything related to the proposed project itself. So if you'd like, I can buzz through the five criteria quickly.
Sure.
So there'll be no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood as this is an existing condition. As a result of the site plan before the planning board, the lot coverage will be decreased from what exists. And there's no new lot coverage associated with the project. Two, there's no opportunity to achieve the proposed benefit through other methods as there's four existing lots that are already being proposed to be merged. Those are the four lots that the, the owner controls. So there's no way to add additional land to get that percentage down. Three, there'll be no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. As was mentioned before, we're going to have a reduction in impervious and lot coverage and we're going to be adding stormwater management collection and, and management practices. Four, whether the request is substantial. So the request is not substantial in that lot coverage is a newly created requirement that this, that this property hasn't been held to until earlier this year. So the existing lot coverage in question, again, long predates the adoption of this ordinance and, and again, we're going to have a reduction from what currently exists. And then finally, whether it was self-created, the difficulty was not self-created as the existing non-conformity, that condition, again, long predates the code that was adopted earlier this year.
All right, so was this project enforced prior to the change and acceptance of the new code?
It was not.
Okay, so knowing that, and you developed this design based on it, wouldn't you want to try to comply with these new codes, right? I mean, 45% is pretty, pretty decent number, right, for lots to not be covered? Well, my question is, all right, if you could take some of what you're taking out, reduce some of the sizes of these buildings, right? Our, our job is to grant the minimum possible, right? For the best interest of, of the town and, and the neighboring, surrounding neighbors, right? So can something be done to reduce the size of the buildings to minimize that number?
Yeah, so the, the size of the buildings, there comes, I mean, I think what the, what the criteria speaks to or can, can the, can the benefit be, be reached through other means? There's definitely a, a limit to how much the buildings can be reduced before there isn't a worthwhile project. The, you know, again, we are seeing a reduction in terms of lot coverage that's being removed in, in certain areas. But the other areas, we, we do need to retain for the required parking, for the ability to circulate through the site safely, you know, and other, and other things where there, we would have a hard time finding other areas to, to reduce that lot coverage and, and meet the benefit that's being sought by the applicant.
Mike, just a question for you. Could, could some of that be achieved, like some of the hard macadam or macatum areas be changed out for open cell pavers of some sort? It's still paved. It's still paved, right? It's still considered paved. It's improved is what the code said, if I remember correctly, right?
Yeah, what the, what the applicant would be open to is, is keeping it as asphalt millings instead of doing a hard pavement. I think there's, there's areas where, where, you know, we could certainly, asphalt milling is essentially being like gravel. It's made of broken up asphalt. Rather than coming in and doing a hard pavement, you know, I think the applicant could consider certain of the areas that are just for parking or something like that to remain as a gravel or an asphalt millings to, to have some amount of permeability.
Permeable, yeah. What's proposed to go inside the five buildings? It's self-storage. It's commercial, is it open to the public?
It, it's open to the public, so there are, I forget the number of units, but there'll be individual units like you see at a, you know, a regular self-storage location. And it'll just be for the, for the public. They'll rent their space, they'll come and go, leave their things, pick up things. It'll just be like a regular self-storage operation.
How many individual units are, are in each structure?
I, it varies because the, the size of the buildings are, are different. I think we have 158 is the total number.
Four looked, well, three of them look exactly the same, but there's, there's two a little smaller.
Yeah, it's 158 total units. I, unless it's noted on the plan. Yeah, we don't have, we don't have the unit counts on the, for the individual buildings, but the total is 158.
Have they done any research on whether there's a need for this? Because we just had a massive building built in Baldwin Place. We have right across the street on Route 6, there's self-storage. There's storage everywhere. I can't imagine you're going to have need. I would hate to see you put these buildings up and then...
Yeah, I think, I think there's, there has been a massive need. It is, it is being gradually met. But, you know, the applicant is looking to make the investment and the, the research has shown that there's, sure. Yeah, why don't you speak to that?
Hello, happy holidays, everybody.
Just state your name and address for the record.
John Lemmons, 30 Crest Road, Mayapack, New York.
All right, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. Yeah, so the application that we're filing here, it's in question, the blacktop, the shrinking of the parking lot that we already have pre-existing. We had a CO from you guys in 2003 on the pre-existing parking lot that's there. Sorry, excuse me. We have a pre-existing parking lot that we're going to shrink. We're going to make it smaller. And the buildings are single-level residential. People are going to come in, drop stuff off, stuff like that. We do have impact studies on the area. The area is exploding with townhouses and smaller residences, stuff like that. People don't have land anymore. It's all developed. So this is going to be an outlet. The proposal's under 30,000 square feet. It's like 20-something, 28 and change. Those units are all different configurations. I can slide the inside unit. I can make one, you know, 40 by 20. I can make the other one 10 by 10. other one ten by ten. So roughly, it's going to be about a hundred and fifty-nine units, but that varies, you know, it could be a hundred and thirty. It depends on who wants bigger sizes, who wants smaller units. But the, we're happy to do whatever, as far as new asphalt, pavers, you know, recycled blacktop. We prefer to put the investment in and make it nice, you know, do all asphalt, stripe it, make it look beautiful, and finish off the industrial park. We are going to put the money in. I mean, we're doing a, you know, retention pond, we're going to be striping it, and we want to offer it to the community as something that's beautiful, something that's nice for us, and it goes congruent with whatever, all the stuff we already currently have. We have big warehouses there, they're blue, they're, you know, it's a construction industrial park. We're just going to cap off our property, and this is the last, you know, thing to do. There's no more land left. So as far as our lot coverage goes, we are proposing to shrink it, put more money, make it look nicer, and have a quieter operation, and get away from all the truck traffic and industrial, you know, businesses that are the nature of our property. So that's pretty much that.
Mike, what was the nature for that change in percentage lot coverage?
I don't know.
Was it driven by permeability and rain?
Runoff.
Yeah, runoff and...
The code says impervious surfaces, including buildings, roofed areas, paved surfaces, paver areas, but I guess if it's pervious, so if you guys would agree to bring down the, you know, put some pervious pavers in some of your areas, that may help. I mean, that would lower the area.
If you would like us to put pavers now, we could do that. I mean, we would like to do it beautifully with, you know, nice asphalt and make it look nice, but I'll do whatever you guys want.
You have a parking lot, right, that's for, I guess, peripheral parking, right? If someone's going to come up to a unit, they're going to drive up to it, right?
Yes, yeah, they're all drive-up, there's no indoor stuff like that.
So that additional parking area that around the retaining wall is meant for what?
For... This is just parking. This is extra parking space. We actually shaved, we didn't want to go for a building variance, so we eliminated a building. We're down to five buildings. We started with six. So this was the sixth building in question. We didn't want to even go for an additional variance for buildings, we do want to make it a simple project.
You need the parking too, right?
Well, the parking's a plus, but we're still shrinking our lot coverage by five percentage points even with this. So we're still smaller than our footprint where we're on right now, since 2003 when the last CO on our property.
For that parking area, you make that open pavers, right, just for that parking, and then the rest of the, between the buildings can be asphalt, right?
So if you guys, yeah, I mean, if you want this area here notched out as far as, so, I'm trying to think of the name, it was called, well, we used to do this, we used to sell this material through Unilock. It was called turf stone back in the day. I'm not too sure the terminology. Cameron's Deli and Carmel, it's their parking lots, it's, you know, that was one of our projects, but...
The library has it.
Yeah, the library has it, yep. We could do that here, knock off this section and do it. To be honest, with our stormwater plan that we had, we have proposed here, I don't know if that's going to, that's a better question for Adam, I don't know if that's going to affect it with the pavers compared to the asphalt, with the way that we have everything pitched properly.
I'm not familiar with the topography there, but does that slope back?
This is relatively flat. There's a little bit of a ridge line that comes through here, and it pitches a little bit that way and a little bit that way, but it's not dramatic.
But there's a huge drop right beyond that.
Behind here, yes.
This retaining wall.
That's all your property.
That's our property as well.
Drops down.
Yes.
Correct.
So you have storm drains and catch basins that collect all of it?
There'll be a full sweep and post-construction stormwater management. We could look at that option. Now, Mike, you're saying that if we went to a porous option, we could reduce that from our percentage, so do we need to go back and figure out what that would become?
Percent of the lot area, which shall include the total horizontal area of all impervious surfaces, including buildings and...
So I guess my question is, do we go forward, and is a variance granted at the seventy-one percent with the condition that a certain portion of the site use porous asphalt, or do we need to come back and recalculate that number?
Maybe they should come back and recalculate.
Yeah, I'm thinking...
Yeah, I want to see it recalculate it.
Excluding the porous pavers that we're potentially going to offer?
Correct. And obviously, it's a cell, there's some solid portion of it, but there's open cells, right, so you have to factor that in. You know, I mean, my thought is just like this whole back area, right, and even whatever this distance is between the buildings, I can't even read it with glasses on.
It's got to be at least twenty feet.
So whatever that distance is, you maintain that same distance in front of these buildings, and then the rest of that is pervious.
Okay. If, just so that we're not having this conversation next month, if in looking at it, we determine something other than a permeable paver, like a stabilized asphalt, or a stabilized gravel, or some other more porous option...
Porous asphalt.
Or porous asphalt. There's lots of ways to do this.
There's such an animal, yeah.
Would those options also be found acceptable, or are we...
I think I would interpret it as such...
Speak to me first before you, we'll talk, and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, Mike, I just, the only reason I think why this code changed to that was because of that reason, right? Environmental purposes. So that's where I'm kind of gearing this to.
Yeah, and again...
So if that helps reduce this number, again, our plight is to grant the minimum possible.
Understood, and I understand that from a zoning perspective, from a stormwater perspective, I do want to make it clear that the site will comply with all state regulations with regards to stormwater and managing runoff from the site that's currently not managed.
Your license runs on that, buddy.
I'm a landscape architect, so the engineer's my office.
What about the use of underground storage for water, you know, like the system that has almost a zero runoff? That doesn't help them with this number. They need to get something that's not, that is impervious, I mean, is not impervious.
Right.
Has to be pervious.
Okay.
From what I understand, in the past, you stored mulch all along that back line? You would not be selling mulch anymore?
No, that's what we're trying to get away from, all the truck traffic and all the construction, everything. We were in the mulch business for about twenty-five years, it was a good business, fed us, clothed me, you know, put us to school. We are getting away from it to develop our property. We're getting older, moving on, doing different things. The trucking business is still there. My father and my brother have a trucking company. They're like, you know, four or five trucks, they park up here, and it's a quiet operation. The self-storage thing is quiet. It's...
Well, I could say, I live not far from there, and I do hear a lot of noise coming at six o'clock in the morning sometimes from that area. I don't know who it is.
Yeah, it's trucks.
Yeah.
That's why we're trying to get away from that. We're trying to help everybody out, and, you know, for us as the landowner and stuff like that, it's profitable for us to go in this route compared to the loud, noisy route. So, yeah, we're just cleaning up, as Mike would say, cleaning up the file. We're cleaning up the file. As far as our lot coverage goes personally, as a resident of this town, I don't understand how all these shopping centers are going to go away with their lot coverage now. Everyone's out of code then. Every shopping center and convenience store and everything is completely covered with blacktop.
They're grandfathered in.
When they come in, yeah, when they come in, they're going to have the same problem. That's what I said earlier.
So they're all going to have the same, thank you, Mike. Yeah, they're all going to be up here, so that's why for me, we are happily to do whatever you guys want, but I feel that this is going to be a recurring problem that you guys are going to be seeing. You know, that's just how it goes.
Our planning board does a great job. They help work you guys along and develop these plans to be smart and, you know, considerate of what the town's needs are and whatnot, but I don't know, they always consider everything. So just in my mind, I think that would help reduce that number, coverage-wise.
Okay.
We got to be careful here, because this could be Pandora's box, right? This is the first application like this coming in front of us, so we want to be smart about it, and, you know, each case is judged on its own merits and set of conditions and what have you. I could see the need for this, right? You just explain that there is a need for this in the community, so we want to help you get to that point, but we want to do it smart.
Okay.
What is the existing lot coverage as it is right now?
Seventy-six percent.
Seventy-six.
And we had a CO for occupancy on our last building in 2003 with seventy-six percent lot coverage, and nothing has changed since then. So we're, I mean, like you said, everyone's grandfathered in, I feel, personally, I feel we're in the same category as far as grandfathered in. Since 2003, we have a CO, we've been operating business out of there since then. That's almost thirty years.
And you are grandfathered in if you don't touch it.
If we don't, I get that, I know, it's like Adam and Eve touching the apple, you know? I get it, I get it. But, yeah, we're not trying to do nothing crazy, it's all single-level buildings. I don't know if you guys have the renderings, they're blue, they match what we're doing. It's, you know, quiet, we're getting away from loud noises and operating machinery out there.
I don't think we have renderings in the elevations.
I did bring a copy.
We have a copy of, so you guys can get a view.
What is the thought for what you will do with five buildings if three don't get rented? What will you do with those other three buildings? Have you thought about it?
Well, yeah, as far as our personal businesses and stuff like that go, we have a lot of warehouse space already, and our tenants need more space to store stuff. I have, you know, motorcycle shops, car guys, stuff like that in this area. There's a lot of jet skis and boats and stuff like that, everyone that lives on the lake. I have a list of clients that, I mean, if we have, as soon as the buildings, you guys give me the COs on them, as soon as I get the COs, I can get them rented within probably sixty to ninety days. The impact studies that were done in our area, there's a reason why the money is going in this direction, because there's a demand for it. The project in Baldwin Place, there was a project in Somers on Route 100, it's kind of supply and demand. There's a demand for it now, I'm not saying there's going to be a demand forever, but for now, there is.
I just have two questions. The first one is, is there an office associated with this? Because I think the other ones generally have like a separate building.
So if you look at the building right here, Building Five, the office is going to be in the bottom right corner, which is pre-existing. It's a pre-existing building with a two-level office, has like a little loft and, you know, regular entrances and stuff like that.
Are people going to be able to come in here at all times of night, or is it just certain hours?
I believe it's going to be a certain hour operation. We're going to have it all fenced off, gated with a punch code, and we're mom and pop. I don't see us doing twenty-four hours a night. We're small, you know, we're a small family. I hope I'm not there at nine-thirty at night, you know, letting people in the gate.
You guys can't control that, or you can control that, but considering some of the neighbors around there, right, someone's going in at ten o'clock at night, they're leaving the high beams on.
Well, right now, I mean, I don't know if you guys are familiar with our industrial park and things like that, but right now, people go in, they turn around, they park vehicles and stuff like that, all, I mean, they're at five-thirty in the morning, six AM, you know, and those are all loud, big equipment. That's a loud stuff. We're trying to get away from that. We're trying to do, people putting Christmas lights away, you know, stuff like that. I like to ideally have it where it's a residential thing. People come in in a car, you know, they pull between the little things here, they have a parking spot they can park, go get whatever they need to get, and mosey on home. These things aren't big enough to have anything major in there. There are only eight-foot tall ceilings, nine-foot tall ceilings, it's like eight and three-quarters, whatever. You're not putting a massive vehicle in there, you can't even fit an RV inside of it. So whatever's going to be there is going to be relatively small, and you have to carry it. I mean, it's going to be, you know, relatively quiet. That's our goal.
All right, you guys good on the board?
Does the pavement go around the entire building? Because there's an arrow between the fifty-six hundred and the forty-one hundred square foot, and it says proposed end of pavement?
Fifty-six, you're looking at this one right here, fifty-six?
Between those two, it says the end of pavement.
Right.
So it kind of indicates that pavement would end at that point?
Yeah, we're showing asphalt directly around the buildings and in the center drive aisle, and the remainder would remain as the existing asphalt.
Yeah, so it's going to be pavement up to the building with a gap for little landscaping, maybe some facade or whatever, that's where it says end of pavement right there, that gap. Am I correct with that?
Yeah, yeah, so the asphalt would wrap directly around the buildings and would be in the central aisle. The remainder of that would remain as the, to this point, has been shown as to remain as the compacted millings.
So that arrow's not the end of the driveway, it's just the end up to?
No.
A little gap between the building and the pavement?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, no questions?
All right, you guys good here? Anybody in the public wish to be heard on this application? Sir? Can you give him a mic, please?
Bill Stein, ninety-eight Blumer Road in...
Can you raise your right hand, please? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I've heard a lot of good things. I didn't expect it to be that good, actually.
Can you guys just address the board, though, please?
Okay. Well, okay, still, I've heard a lot of good things, which I didn't expect to hear. I just need some clarifications, I guess. You said this is a one-story building?
Yeah, one level, flat roof. It's going to be, I mean, it has a little pitch, but virtually flat.
Okay. Is there any impact to the residents living there?
You guys should not be able to see it whatsoever. On Blumer Road, we have a bunch of landscaping, pine trees and stuff like that that will be in place. There's stuff that's currently in place, but from Blumer, I know just where you guys are, you'll never see it. The buildings that are currently there, the peaks are twenty-eight feet at the peak.
Twenty-five story buildings here.
Yeah, you're never going to see it.
Yeah, I'm the second house on Blumer, and I do see the buildings.
Show them the rendering.
Yeah.
That's a good rendering, just to give you an image of what you would see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, excellent. So there's no need for a fence between that and the neighbors, is there?
No, we were going to do it anyway. We were going to fence the entire thing off, just for, not even privacy, just security reasons with the business that we're offering.
Okay, that was kind of a leading question, because the stockade fence that's up at my end goes into disrepair, and nobody takes care of it.
Yeah, so that's where we want to put nice blacktop and stuff like that. We want to put an investment into the property and redo a lot of things. That's where we're at here. So as soon as we square everything away as far as permitting-wise, we're going to be doing investments into the upkeep of the facility, not just the investment in building this, but everything surrounding as well. There's fences on both sides, both are going to be replaced. I already have, I don't know if you noticed, there's galvanized steel piping there for a chain-link privacy fence that will be running completely parallel with the property, and the fence that's going to be going around there is going to be, you know, iron bar, gapped-out security fence. That will be, I mean, it's very low. You're not going to...
I mean, for the most part, during the summer, you guys disappear because of all the bushes and shrubs.
Yeah.
But during the winter...
In the winter, that's, I completely agree. That's why this property line over here, yeah, take a look. So this property line right here where the fence is going, this is kind of where the fence is going right now.
Yeah, here I am.
Yep, you're right here, yeah. So this whole fence line, I have galvanized steel piping already in there in place. We're going to take down the wood and redo it with galvanized, you know, privacy fencing.
Okay, good stuff, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no, not a problem.
Yeah.
And the board can make that a condition if you feel like granting this.
Well, you're doing it anyway, right?
You said it's privacy fencing.
It's privacy, it's chain-link with the slats that go in the chain-link. The slatted chain-link fence, it's galvanized, it's going to last forever. That's where longevity for us. Do it once, we'll never do it again.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
That's our plan. Thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to be heard? I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing on this.
Are we going to hold it over to say?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'll look for a motion to hold it over, sorry.
Motion to hold it over.
Second.
Do I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so when you guys come back next month, show us a plan. You know, in my mind, like I said, it's not, maybe not only just that parking area, but there might be some other areas that you could just turn into, even the millings, right, the millings that still permeate and allow. So show us that number and what that percentage is, all right?
So just a question of my own. You would like to have us do the, let's call it the turf stone? That is the proposal you're looking for as far as...
More importantly, it's the calculation.
Different options.
Something that makes it more pervious.